Evening, everyone. Welcome to this budget work session for Springfield Township and Board. Call this meeting the board. It's like we have two items on our agenda this evening. One is to propose capital improvements plan. Well, I think proposed twenty twenty three in the books. So that mark over to
Good evening, everybody. I'll come right to the chase. Move on with the meeting. The goal is to go over both items today. Got anything questions that the board may wish? If no further ado, I'll turn it over to Terry. She can start the presentation.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our first budget work session for twenty twenty three. The first item is to review the capital improvements plan. Let's get started. Okay. The first thing that we like to do is just go over a little overview of what we're going to talk about. First of all, we're going to talk a little bit about the details of what a capital improvements plan really is. We'll review the total request for twenty twenty three. We will focus on the twenty twenty three items by department. As well as review the items that were built into the twenty twenty three budget. All of those items, obviously, the payment, we pay for those, and we're going to provide funding options for those items. First of all, the capital improvements plan. Our capital improvements plan is a five-year plan covering years twenty twenty three through twenty twenty seven. This is a working document. It lists potential and proposed capital improvements. They include construction, renovations, repairs and maintenance, or large equipment purchases. All of the items were requested by department directors with estimated costs based on today's costs. And there was two items, two important items that the capital improvement plan provides. Number one, it's used for strategic planning purposes, and number two, it serves as a guide for future requirements. For our five-year plan, the capital improvements in total thirty million twenty one thousand three hundred and sixty dollars. The CIP is a document that can and will change based on the needs of the township. And all CIP items require the approval by the township manager and/or for the supervisors. Our list in front of you is the twenty twenty three totals by department. For administration for twenty twenty three, we have two major projects that are in motion right now. One in motion, one prepared for twenty twenty three. The facilities construction for our building construction will be completed in the first quarter of twenty twenty three. We estimate those costs to be right around three point one million dollars to finish that project up. The second project is Davy's Drive, which has been on our list for a couple of years. And we had PUC approval back in twenty twenty, and we've been working through that process to get that project underway. Do expect it to start in twenty twenty three. For community development, we have two items on the list for twenty twenty three for a total of one hundred seventy six thousand one hundred and twenty five dollars. For finance, there's one item related to new software estimated at one hundred eighty thousand dollars. For water quality, the MS four program, we have projects proposed just over a million dollars. Information technology, which is basically annual expenditure, replacement of equipment, is just over three hundred thousand dollars. For the police department, ninety thousand seven hundred dollars is proposed. We also have one item, a training simulator at one hundred seventy five thousand that was recorded in twenty twenty four, but we expect that to move to twenty twenty three. We'll talk about that just a little bit later. For parks and recreation, we have one item estimated at forty three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Public Works, one million eight hundred twenty nine thousand seven hundred dollars. Wastewater treatment for intermunicipal sewer is one million five hundred twenty thousand. And the wastewater treatment Springersbury Sewer at two million one hundred sixty five thousand dollars in improvements. Overall, for all funds for twenty twenty three, we have a list of ten million nine hundred fifty three thousand two hundred and seventy five dollars. In addition to that ten million dollars, we also have an annual contribution for fire equipment and contribution for Yopper. And that is, that is a total of one hundred seventy nine thousand five hundred and eighty eight dollars, and that ties into Yopper's budget for twenty twenty three. Next, we have items by department. As I mentioned, for administration, we have a construction in progress, continues on the administration building. It is funded by a general obligation bond, which is a series of twenty twenty one. And we have a redevelopment assistance capital program grant, which is a RAC grant. And that is a three point five million dollar grant award. We have not yet received those funds. For Davy's Drive Railroad Crossing, the estimated project cost is one point five billion dollars. We do have two grants associated with that project, one from Warren County at one hundred seventy five thousand and another state grant, just over eight hundred thirty six thousand dollars. The remaining is the township share of four hundred ninety thousand dollars, which you'll find on your list, and that will be paid by general fund reserves. For community development, the comprehensive plan was approved by the Board of Directors, the Board of Supervisors. And earlier this year, we did have a third-party vendor that will be completing that task along with our community development team. We had also a multi-year archiving project that has been going on, and we expect that continuing for the next three to four years. Funding is the general fund, and both items were built into the twenty twenty three general fund operating budget. For the MS four water quality program, we have one large project that's proposed, which is the East Tributary for the wastewater treatment facility that is in the permit cycle of twenty eighteen to twenty twenty two. We do anticipate a new permit cycle, cycle for twenty twenty three for the next four years that has yet to be approved. The funding for that project is both grants, York County Stormwater Consortium, and general fund reserves supports the MS four program. For the next departments, the finance, as I mentioned, we've been reviewing the software replacement for administration, finance, and community development. That would include software purchase, installation, and training. For information technology, we have our annual computer equipment replacements, that's for laptops and desktops for employees. We do have a storage replacement scheduled for the admin and waste department as well as wastewater treatment. A server migration is also a project on the list as well as a software upgrade. Do have another item that has been on the list for quite a while, that's audio equipment replacement for the board room. We expect that to be completed when the new board room is ready for use. Those items are funded by the capital improvements fund. And for police department, there are three items. We have the annual vehicle custom fitting. Have a body camera server and coding pathfinder software upgrade. All of those are funded by the capital improvements fund, and those are critical to police operations. We have one possible addition, as I mentioned, twenty twenty three. That is a training simulator. We do have a large training room that is planned for the police facility. The simulator was an item that was talked about early on in the construction process. And they, we do expect, chief expects to have this funded by grants and donations, which would not affect our general fund or capital improvements fund.
Good question on that information technology areas.
Yes.
I know we've outsourced that function, these recommendations that came from the outside.
That is correct, yes. Next, we have the public works list, and we do have a long list for public works. And we have a regular vehicle replacements. It's on a fifteen to twenty year schedule, replacement schedule. We have one new item, the concrete pump, which has been suggested. We have traffic signal improvements, those, those construction, and it's actually in progress. A sidewalk has been approved to be added at the Giant and Lowe's Plaza. That is a Penn dot grant, and the estimated township cost is eighty five thousand seven hundred dollars. And that is along East Market Street, which will contain pedestrians on walkway through that area. We look to resurface basketball and hockey rink. The hockey rink was listed last year and was moved to twenty twenty three. We look to resurface parking lots and various parks around township. A new item that was added was security and lighting upgrades for Springfield Park. And we are actually awarded a state grant to support that project. Stormwater crossings, there are several that need renovation and upgrades as well as stormwater rehabilitation miscellaneous locations. That is an annual expenditure that continues year to year. All of those items should be funded through the capital improvements fund. We do have grant funding for the traffic signals improvements, pedestrian sidewalk, and security upgrades at this point. Next on the list is Parks and Recreation Department. We have one item, which is a land study for the camp security master plan that will be funded through the Recreation Reserve Fund. We have grant funding that supports that project. One item is secured, and we have another application that has been submitted with the agency. For the wastewater treatment, intermunicipal sewer, a capacity study is on our list. That will be a long-term study completed by third-party engineers. Mill Creek Interceptor is a realignment and replacement. That's a multi-year project. And then our regular replacement. And all the funding will be through the wastewater treatment, intermunicipal sewer reserve fund. The wastewater treatment Springfield Berry Sewer, we have sewer rehabilitation for various neighborhoods. Those neighborhoods would include Fairfield, Yorkshire, and Haynes Acres. A grinder pump replacement is due. Equipment replacement is on a regular equipment replacement schedule. The East York Pump Station valve and force main bypass replacement scheduled for repairs. And then we have manhole frames and covers, which is an annual expense. All of those will be funded through wastewater treatment sewer fund.
Sorry. Probably again, when the passage study is supposed to be finished.
That's a great question.
Shortly. Then we, then we, and
On the next screen is a summary of all of our funding options. And as I mentioned, we have multiple departments that have grant funding associated with those projects. We've had great success in the last two to three years with our grants. And I just want to take just a few minutes to go through some of the grants that are, that we're waiting for pending for this budget year. We have three annual grants that are typically part of our general fund. The first one is the Sounds of Summer, which is approximately three thousand dollars. We have a recycling grant of eighty five thousand dollars. We have support for bulletproof vests for the police department, estimated at five thousand dollars. We currently have two Arlie grants, one for memory lane and industrial highway. And the other is for Haynes and Eastern Boulevard. They are traffic signal upgrades, just over four hundred twenty thousand dollars. We have a Greater Grove grant at hundred and sixty two thousand dollars that was approved in twenty twenty two. It's part of our budget. We have yet to receive those funds. We have a grant from the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation at two hundred thousand dollars. That paperwork has been approved, submitted, and we're waiting for funding. It's part of our twenty twenty two budget. We have the redevelopment grant, the RAC grant, at three point five million dollars that was approved for our construction project, and we expect funding to be in the fourth quarter of twenty twenty three, which will be after our completion of the project. For Davy's Drive, we have two grants. They total just over one million dollars for that project. We have a Penn dot grant for the sidewalk improvement at the Lowe's Plaza. That's just over four hundred thirty thousand dollars. We have funds that should come to us from New York County Consortium for the West Tributary Project wastewater treatment plant. Those funds are just over seven hundred eighty seven thousand dollars. And then for recreation, we have a DCED grant that will support the camp security study master plan at forty three thousand two hundred dollars. And the park security upgrades, which is state grant, at one million dollars. All of those total seven million six hundred forty seven thousand nine hundred and ninety seven dollars in grant funding. So it's pretty impressive that we've been able to secure all of that money.
I might say, Mark, you and your staff have done an outstanding job securing as many grants as you have. Remember, when I joined the board, one of the largest complaints was we weren't serious about doing the after grants. Clearly, that's changed. You're the gift of God.
Yeah, I don't know if we track it, but I'm hard pressed to remember time when I heard so many grants in the Congress. How many years I've been on the board.
Amazing. Good job.
The staff has done, all the staff has done a great job in that. And Abby puts a lot of time. Some of the grants are easy. When I say easy, there's not a whole lot of paperwork, and some of them would stay exact opposite. So there, there is a lot of time and effort after the fact as well, so. I appreciate the comments.
Next, besides our grant funding, we have two other funding sources that support our capital improvements plan. First is gaming revenue. Those are restricted funds. That was based on the board's resolution in twenty twenty one to support capital improvements projects in the future. And then we have the American Rescue Plan Act funding, ARPA funding, that was received in two installments in twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two for a total of just over two point eight billion dollars. That's also available.
At that point, we're going to talk about how confused it's we have some more expenditures would be.
We will. But basically, from the original guidance, everything's relaxed because the original guidance is pretty restrictive. Now, the actual guidance is pretty much anything that doesn't cover salaries or pensions. So there's, it's pretty wide.
Is there a date we have to have it spent by?
You have to have contract, if you're going to have a contract, like a project, it has to be in place by the end of twenty twenty four. And, but then it gives you until the end of twenty twenty six to spend on that particular call. At this point, none of that funding is spent.
That is correct. And then recommendations moving forward. We've been able to secure quite a bit of funding to support the capital improvements plan. The, the two items that are questionable are the vehicles and heavy equipment purchases. We've seen huge delays, lead time, supply chain delays. So those may slide into the next year. We are placing orders, but have multiple eight months, nine months. And then just a reminder that the grant funding, the application process can be complicated and lengthy. And we need to have those projects ready to go to get to the application process. So it's a, it's a big part of what we do behind the scenes and planning for the projects as it is funding opportunities. Any questions?
Any questions? Excellent.
All right, we're going to move on to the next presentation, so review of the twenty twenty three budget. This is a preliminary budget. So as we move through the presentation, we'll review the budget process that we go through behind the scenes. Review the budget totals by fund. We are going to identify any budget reporting changes as we typically do every year. We'll have a summary of the revenue expenditures, and we'll focus on the general fund. We'll also look at the general fund fund balances as we go forward. We've already talked about the capital improvements plan, but that does tie into our budgets for each fund. We'll talk a little bit about the sewer fund moving forward, and then our next steps as we go through the budget process. This is our budget process, and this begins in July, where we look to start our capital improvements planning. And then we move from July to August and begin a preliminary budget planning. That will move us into September, where the budget, our budget is already created. And every department director meets with the township manager as we review each line item. So all of those line items are reviewed before we get to these budget sessions. In October, we finalize the five-year capital improvements plan, as we just reviewed. We prepare a preliminary budget, which we'll talk about. We get to the budget work sessions, which are public work sessions with the Board of Supervisors. And then in November, the township manager will present the budget for our Board of Supervisors meeting and the look for a final approval for the Board of Supervisors in December. This is a coordinated effort with all of the directors under the direction of the township manager. And as you can see, this is not a one-day process. Lots of time is into this. This is all of our funds, our budgeted funds, and that's budgeted for twenty twenty three. The general fund were eighteen point nine million dollars. Liquid fuels fund is eight hundred ten thousand nine hundred thirty nine dollars. That's up a little bit from last year. Our allocation, anticipated allocation from the state is a little higher than for the previous year. Our subdivision Recreation Reserve Fund is estimated ninety one thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. Petition Streetlight Fund remain the same at ninety six thousand five hundred dollars as of last year. Capital Improvements Fund is listed eight million seven hundred six thousand five hundred and fifty two dollars. The stormwater water quality MS four program is, has a budget of one million three hundred seven thousand six hundred and thirty eight. The sewer fund is estimated operational cost twelve million thirteen thousand thirty dollars. And other funds, which are miscellaneous funds, at three, three point, at three thousand five hundred fifty dollars. Our reported updates for twenty twenty three, for the general fund, we're presenting a preliminary budget that's balanced. We prepared the budget with no municipal tax increase for twenty twenty three. Within the budget, we included both gaming revenue, grant funding, which is extremely important in balancing the general fund budget. For the capital improvements fund, our building construction is included. We expect that to be included in the first quarter of twenty twenty three. The water quality fund includes East Tributary project, as mentioned earlier. And then the sewer fund will begin a discussion about a possible sewer rate increase. There are several items for the compensation plans that were included in this budget. A three percent increase was estimated for non-union employees. Contract increases were applied for all union employees. Post-retirement medical benefits for related to fire. Those contract obligations have expired and filled those, so that was removed from the budget. And we had the healthcare benefits increases came in at very reasonable rates. For most employees, it was at five percent, and the teams were just came in at a very low one point six two percent, which is great, was where we are with inflationary rates today. Next, we have the revenue for the general fund. The general fund revenue is eighteen million nine hundred one thousand seven hundred fifty one dollars. And most of that revenue, seventy one percent of it, is coming from our tax base. Keep in mind that our real estate taxes is a very low rate, one point seven mils. Our other taxes include our business privilege tax, mercantile tax, earned income tax, and local services tax, also includes the real estate transfer taxes. All of those taxes estimate very conservative levels, and they do depend on what's happening in the economy as we move forward. Next, we have our expenditures. Obviously, with the balanced budget, we're eighteen million nine oh one seven fifty one. And of those expenditures, fifty three point one four percent is spent on public safety, which includes both police and fire, which is critical to our operations here. For the general fund, as I mentioned, we have no tax increase, and we are balanced, which is, which is a very difficult and challenging piece of this process. For the department changes, for administration, we recorded an increase of five point two percent. And we do have one capital item that was recorded under that department, which is a codes and orgases review. The finance department increases listed at two point one percent. The IT increases at nine point seven percent, which is related to our outside contract services. Community development came in at an increase of four point nine percent. And most of that is falling under the contract services, professional services. The police department even at two point three percent. And we did remove some of the expenditures for their building and moved it to public works as we are combining into one facility in twenty twenty three. For fire, the increase is a two point five percent. Public Works is an increase of eleven point five percent, and that's because of those cost allocation changes moving into one building as well as fuel costs, which seems to be increasing at a steady rate. For Parks and Recreation, there's a six percent increase in operational costs, and that's related to personnel and summer program personnel. And transfer to the capital account includes our debt service. For the general fund history, for the fund balance, we have a healthy fund balance. We continue to have a fund balance reserve, ten percent, which is required by resolution. And for twenty twenty two, as we look at our current activity, our year-to-date activity, we are expecting, right now, we're at a two hundred eighty three thousand dollar surplus as we move through our current expenditures. Expect that to continue through year end. And hopefully, we don't see any major changes in the fourth quarter. Next, we have the list for twenty twenty three. This is the capital improvements plan list that we had just covered. Just over ten point nine million dollars, and that includes all funds, including sewer. For the sewer fund budget, we did look, take a good look at our higher costs. We are experiencing certainly a higher percentage, inflationary percentages increases on our chemicals, utilities, electricity. So we are looking at preparing a rate increase for twenty twenty three. We do have continuous maintenance and capital improvement projects that have to happen with, with utility. And the last rate increase was in twenty eighteen. We were increasing rates every five years, and that was a five dollar per quarter increase. So we'll have more information. Mark and I are working on that to see where we should be and what's reasonable for our customers.
Just kind of editorial comment, familiar with a few other of this town. They are outrageously high compared to what we chose.
And finally, our forecast, we have a pretty delicate budget as we're balanced. Our budget, and from a revenue standpoint, as we mentioned, we depend on our business taxes, changes in economy can certainly change that. We highlighted inflation in red seems to still be out of control. So hopefully that, that fits into, in some, in line next couple of months, and then of course, the job market, as some of our taxes come from our job market and employment throughout our municipality. For revenue opportunities, gaming seems to be strong in the township. Grant funding, there's a lot of grants and available funding from state, federal, and local, which we need to take advantage of, we continue to do that. I will look at corporate financial support for some of those special events and activities. For cost, the increase was included in the twenty twenty-three budget. Our post-retirement medical costs for police, and that's estimated at one hundred seventy thousand dollars for the year. We are concerned about escalating costs and supply chain delays. As the interest rates have increased, that's increased our borrowing, so long-term financing is a question mark. Unfunded state mandates, we have no control over, and then catastrophic event is always a question mark. So those are those items that might be a problem. We hope that questions?
Yeah. Gaming revenue, it goes into restricted capital, is that included in the general fund?
What happens with the general, it comes into the general fund as a revenue, and it's transferred out, so it's in, it's in and out. The gaming revenue estimated for twenty twenty-three is one point six million.
It's included in the budget that is restricted.
That is correct, yes.
Do you have any questions? Anything else you guys have?
We don't, I don't have anything other. If you wanted to delve into the specifics of the budget, we could do that, but if you're comfortable with presentation, we can delve into that if you want. One time to review, and we can delve into the specifics next Monday, or we can do both.
Any thoughts from your side? I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable not digging into the detail. Presentation for you. On that, that would be okay? Probably any digging into details, I guess we have to go to them to, to also maybe answer questions. I think I have. I think I can save what's in the trials. That's it. Next week's session, is there an agenda, are we ready for that?
We don't have the agenda yet, but that's, we'll delve into the specifics of the general fund sewer fund budget and the plan for next Monday, that's the seventeenth is the next meeting, is to have more of a presentation for the sewers on potential rate increase.
We might have something for that. How much will that hinge on the capacity study? Is that, should we wait till that's finished to finalize that or?
I don't think that really has much to play in that, because the that study encompasses the intermunicipal group just as much as it encompasses Springfield, where the rate, potential rate increase would just be spread. And just to clarify, if the our sister municipalities, when we, when we set a rate seventy dollar a quarter, whatever it may be, that doesn't apply to our contributing municipalities, contributing municipalities, they pay their percentage share of the expenses based on.
I guess what I would suggest that we maybe add to the agenda for next Monday is a discussion of the proposed alphabet. Because we do need to make a decision fairly soon on that, if that, they, we have to have a conversation. Springfield. Do we have any public online?
No, do, no.
Is there anyone in the audience has any comments for the budget decision? Sweetly. All right, meeting adjourned, thank you, everyone.